I'd like to call the meeting to order. I would also like to tell you we have no sound system. The mothers up here will have no problem projecting, but if you can't hear, please, you know, raise your hands or whatever. All right. I'd like to read a statement that says, "We kindly request all audience members in council chambers be seated throughout the meeting unless speaking at the podium. We also request that citizens in attendance remain in the audience seating area and refrain from approaching council members and staff at the dais." Roll call?
Honorable Mayor, before we get started with roll call, I'd just like to notify the council and the public that Councilmember Heckes submitted a letter of resignation to the city clerk on Thursday, January 2nd, effective immediately. Staff will bring options to look to and look to the council for direction in filling the vacancy during our January 21st city council meeting.
Thank you.
Mayor Wiggins?
Here.
Mayor Proton Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Davies?
Here.
Councilmember Pogecourt?
Here.
Everyone is present. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask you all to rise for the invocation while Pastor Kevin Cottle from Christian Life Assembly leads us. Thank you.
Let's pray. Father, we just, we just thank you for the new year as we look back at our last trip around the sun and we take inventory of our lives and look at what you have for the future. We just thank you for an opportunity to go around another trip around the sun and just pray for these leaders that have been entrusted to lead us as people, that you would give them your wisdom in leading us and guiding us and making decisions for our city. Pray for our county leadership, our state leadership, and our national leadership, as well as I know there's so many things going on. And we just again say thank you for an opportunity to have government such as we have, conversation, freedom, and we just ask it in your name. Amen.
Thank you. And Mr. Pogecourt, could you please lead us in the flag salute? Salute what?
I believe this to the flag of the United States of America and a superior republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we be seated. And next up, we have the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. Is there anyone in the audience who would like something removed from the consent agenda? Counsel?
Motion to approve consent as presented. I'll second the motion.
When moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Let the record show it was a 4-0 vote. Audience oral and written communications? The council welcomes public comments on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. We respectfully request that this public forum be utilized in a positive and constructive manner. Persons addressing the council should first state their name and area of residence, the matter of city business to be discussed, and the organization or persons represented it, if any. Comments directed to an item on the agenda should be made at the time the item is called for discussion by the mayor. Are there any public comments?
My name is Carl Garrick. I live in the city of Tatchapi over by Jacobson, Junior High School. As some of you might have known, on Christmas Day, we had a white Christmas. Along with it, a number of trees came down. And this is one of the heaviest snows that I've seen since I've been here, other than maybe January the 7th of 2007. Anyway, I think this is an emergency, not normal routine. There is a number of trees in the area between the sidewalk and the street all over town. I don't know who's responsible for them trees. Some of them on my next door neighbor. There's one sticked right above his house, and if that one comes down, it's going to go through his roof. There's a tree in the back of his house, and also, if it comes down, it's going to go through my property. I think we need an officer. I think this is an emergency and more and being handled with emergency funds. I can remember a number of years ago, in the middle of October, the third weekend of October, on a Friday around 6 o'clock, a tree in City Park looked perfect and everything else, in every way, shape, or form, came down. If it come down 15 minutes earlier, we would have lost a few people. I think some of these trees have been compromised, and maybe you ought to have some way to actively review the two trees, some of them is public right away? What about some people's backyard? Who can't afford to take down a huge limb at 40 and 50 feet above their head? So that's why I'm asking the city to consider it, look into it, about handling some of these trees that have been compromised. Even at the old hospital, that big old pine tree, you notice that? I took three loads of branches to the dump myself. So I think, folks, I would appreciate it if you looked into it and consider reviewing these trees with a city employee or not. I don't know what officers said. They cost a whole lot of money. Maybe a city employee can look at some of these trees and review them and say, yeah, they've got to be removed. Corey Street, you take a tour in front of our place, you know. Okay? Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Hello, everybody. I'm Debbie Hand, and I live over in Parkview Estate. And I'm just here to, as part of the new year, to just kind of give a little pitch for the arts and the arts community. I don't know if TCT did they? Yeah, TCT was going to try to come. They're bored tonight, but they have some important business to take care of. First of all, though, I want to thank you all for, or Greg or Corey, for getting the BK heater work done because...
He was done.
Thank you. Because it was pretty bad last time we were to play, and we had two sold-out concerts in December that we would have probably had to just turn the heater off. And we have another one coming up with the top, one of the country's top bluegrass bands coming up in a couple of weeks, and we really don't like to freeze people out. So thank you for that. And we just, you know, the arts have contributed over $8 billion to GDP every year. That's more than agriculture does, that's more than transportation, and more than construction, believe it or not. I was surprised to hear that, but I think that includes Hollywood, too. And it does have a big trade surplus with other nations of over $25 billion. So they're really important, and we're so glad and so lucky that we have a vibrant arts community downtown, and we want to invite you all to participate more. I know, we've seen Phil and at some of the plays. But actually, Peter has some schedules for, all we have right now is Fiddler's Crossing and TCT. You know, TCT's 50th anniversary, and they have a wonderful schedule coming up. The next play is Tripped About a Fool, and it's going to be terrific. And David Rees directing, and we just wanted to encourage you guys to come and encourage you. I know how busy it is. Of all people, I do know how busy you all are and how much work goes into being on the council and on the city staff. But maybe if you look at these schedules and the loop, because of course, I don't have the schedule for, right yet, for T-Pops and for the orchestra and other things, but there should be something for everybody on there. And mark your calendars and get it ahead of time so that you're sure to go. And the other thing, now the football season is over. There's First Friday, which is wonderful. How many, well, I won't ask because it's up there. But I'm hoping that you all have been to some First Fridays, and if not, that's a place maybe to start because Treasure Trove, Gallery of Gifts, the museum, all have some wonderful things happening First Friday, and then you could end up with a free concert. Usually, they're free. We do have a paid one in February, I think. Right, yeah. But usually, there's a free concert, some of them touring musicians, some of them country folk, you never know. Some of them are local people at Fiddler's Crossing at 7:00. So you can do the tour and end up there, and the caveat is that it can be addictive. You might decide that every First Friday, you want to come and do that. But we really love to have you participate with us with all of these, all the arts groups. It's just, we wouldn't have our downtown without the BK Theater, the Hitching Post Theater, Fiddler's Crossing, and all the antique stores. And, I mean, arts really, we are an arts center down there. And in fact, there is grant money, I think, and with the state for declaring yourself an arts center, or at least a cultural center downtown. So we're hoping that. And the other thing is that we have upped the ante as far as the performers and who we're bringing into concerts in the park, and we've, are helping TVRPD with that, and they're bringing in some spectacular groups. And I remember that there was a while when the city was actually the major sponsor, and I kind of miss seeing the city of Tatchapi on the banner of support. So I just like to, this is something you would have to work out with TVRPD, but I would love to pitch to have you get back into that game and support it because it's an economic driver. We have people there from the Antelope Valley and from Bakersfield and from Ridgecrest, every place where it's really hot, and they love to come up to Tatchapi and just be in the park and enjoy the music. And we could get better and better if we, if we have more support, and we're working on that. And also, we'd like to hire Pat West because Peter and I and some of the other ones have been hauling gear since 8:30 in the morning when the concert starts.
I don't want to cut you off. I let you go a little further, but you're really out of time.
Okay.
Really, really out of time.
All right. Well, you'll get the schedules.
Yes.
Thank you, and we hope to see you in the new year.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
Okay. I'll be short and sweet. Okay. The score is snow zero, Tatchapi one. You guys did a great job of managing the snow, getting roads going, dealing with all the brush. I mean, it was overwhelming how bad we were hit, and yet all the major roads were open within hours, and, you know? It was impressive. So just to let you know, I appreciate what you guys did.
Thank you. I have to tell you, just interject it, I had to go to a funeral on Saturday after Christmas, and I was accosted twice while I was trying to get in and sign the book and take my seat about why we didn't plow over the streets, which, you know, if you don't think I do anything as mayor, I really do. Okay, anyone else?
I'm April Wiley. I am in Golden Hills. I've been the director of the National Cemetery at Arvin, and I'm your partnership specialist for the 2020 census. So I would like to be partnering with you and the city of Tatchapi to make sure that we get the money allocated to us for the 2020 census. This is the decennial census. I would like to put on the agenda for this next city council meeting so I can present it to you, give you some formal numbers and things on how the money that has been distributed to us in the past years when Ed Grimes was mayor here, and how we worked with him, and how we did the things for Tatchapi to make sure we had plenty of money for all the things we need, fire department, schools, Head Start, our veterans, our roads. And this is where the money comes from. It starts on April 1st, and if you would, I'd like to be added on the agenda so that I can present to you in a more simple fashion. But this is my information. Here's some information on the census and my business card. I've added some extra ones, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? All right. We're going to move on to number four, disbursements and bills for RSI Petroleum for November 22nd, 2009 through December 30th, 2019.
Madam Mayor, I need to recuse myself because I'm an employee of RSI Petroleum.
Thank you. Are there any questions in the audience regarding this? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I think that we approve the disbursement to RSI Petroleum.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let the record show it was a 3-0 vote. Development Services Director reports, number seven.
Rob, the mic wasn't working. Honorable Mayor, council members, the first item I have for you tonight is an on-call engineering services agreement with Four Creeks Incorporated. As a way of background, as you will recall, a number of months ago, we attempted to hire a consultant to design our HSIP pedestrian crossings project, only to find out after we brought that agreement to you that Caltrans was not supporting the process by which we selected that consultant for the work. Instead, they had made changes over the summer and into the fall about that selection procedure, something they frankly do with alarming regularity. And so after a couple of months of time with our staff, working with Caltrans to identify our options under these latest set of rules for the hiring of engineers for our capital projects, we determined that hiring on the basis of an on-call contract is effectively the same amount of time and effort from a staff perspective as hiring a consultant for each individual project. And so the obvious benefit for staff and for time and cost associated is for us to hire a consultant to take on all of our projects for the next several years instead of to go through a lengthy selection process for every single project. So we undertook that effort and prepared a request for qualifications, which is attached to your staff report, and we received, and the proposal was for a three-year contract with two optional one-year extensions and a maximum contract value of effectively a dollar, under $1 million. We don't expect to have $1 million worth of work. If we do, that's great news. We have lots of good projects to do, but that's, that's the threshold limit before you reach a whole nother layer of paperwork that you have to do. And so advertisement for that RFQ concluded in December. We received three responsive packages from the companies listed in my staff report, ACOM, Four Creeks, and Rutgers and Schuler, all of which, whom you may recall, we've hired in the past to do various projects for us. All three firms were deemed qualified and have had previous experience with the city, but unanimous decision with staff was that Four Creeks Incorporated should be selected for this contract. As you guys will recall, they designed our downtown parking ride facility as a recent example of the work that they've done for us. And so with that as background, we prepared the on-call agreement for this effort and have asked Mr. Schroeder to review that, and we therefore recommend that you approve and authorize the mayor to enter into an on-call agreement with Four Creeks Incorporated to provide engineering services for both federal and state-funded efforts in support of budgeted transportation projects. I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Are there any questions in the audience regarding this? Counsel?
And these are for grant-funded transportation projects.
Yes, that category, so federal and state grants, and then, yeah, and budgeted as well. So we get support for doing a waterline project that it's not bound by this contract requirement. It, it really follows where the money comes from. So in this case, these are rules we must live by if we accept this money from the federal or state, the feds or the state of California.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Also, Jake, we only pay for the work that's done. It's not a...
Yeah, it's not blank check by any measure. There's an entire process in this contract by which we negotiate the price of a contract, an individual task that we ask them to do. They provide a scope and a fee. We negotiate that, and then we authorize that individual task. They bill against that, all of these, anyway, there are a lot of, there's even, there's, our standard contract's five pages long, and then there's like seven pages of Caltrans required language that is, is there in your packet if you're really interested in falling asleep. So...
Really, that's a great question, Mr. Pogecourt. So the, every project that we receive, if we're so fortunate to receive grants in the future, then those monies would be applied. So we're still going to bring the projects to you as a council. This just allows us to streamline things.
And I have another question. How involved is Caltrans in these repairing, construction things? Because I noticed they start a lot of stuff, and it doesn't seem to ever get finished. So that's my concern.
Are you talking about Bakersfield?
Bakersfield, a whole state of California. It seems like they're started, but I haven't seen too much finish.
Yeah, that's it. We're more than happy to ever give you guys an update on what I know about projects in our region. In this case, this isn't, Caltrans, like any state agency, is very departmentalized, and these contracts are related only to how they come alongside us as we receive money directly from the federal government or the state of California execute a project, and they're monitoring and making sure we follow all the rules as we execute that project. Some of the stuff that you're probably speaking about, like the bridge rail replacement at the summit, which caused hu, contributed to the traffic snarls we've had recently. Caltrans, they operate construction projects in a different realm than what you're used to on the local level. Is that maybe the easiest way I can think to say that? It's, they have different factors that determine what they do. They also have a tendency to be very generous with time. It is my observation only, for what it's worth. They're very generous with their contractors over time execution. There are probably good reasons for that in some cases. In terms of the bridge, it's can't pave or pour concrete when there's snow on the ground. So that's probably contributing.
That's only, that's only two weeks out of the year.
I don't think it makes a lot of sense for me to try to make excuses for Caltrans here, so...
Yeah.
But if you guys would ever like an update on some of that stuff, if you can tell me what you're interested, send an email to myself or Greg. I can always try to get information for you.
And they do finish the projects, and we are very, very blessed right now. The state of California is spending a lot of money on the streets, highways, and byways in our county, so we're very blessed.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes. Is there any cost involved for having this company on-call for us? Do we have to have a retention money or anything?
No, there's no additional expense for them to, the bottom line is, it's very much in their best interest for them to have this agreement versus a project-by-project agreement. So they're very willing to enter this contract with no carrying costs. So we only owe them the monies we spend on a specific project.
No retainer.
Yeah.
If there's no further questions, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion on staff's recommendation.
I have a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye as presented by staff.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let the record show it was a 4-0 vote. Active transportation program, cycle five. That's a mouthful.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, council members, the second item I have for you is an information-only item. I am on the wrong tab. Hold on a second. I'll get there. I'm still on the wrong tab. Anyway, sorry, pardon me for this. I have it here. There it is. All right. So as you all know, Active Transportation Program, ATP, is, was created in 2013 by the state of California and the federal government in order to encourage active modes of transportation, which in short is non-motorized transportation. This is one of the little clarification issues I think I should drive home. So this is principally walking and biking, but it's conveyance that doesn't include a combustion engine. And so, and the city of Tatchapi, this is a subset of the grant programs that the state does. They're, they're competitive, meaning depending upon your need, you can be successful in achieving additional monies for your area above and beyond what you normally get for road repair or other purposes. And the city of Tatchapi has been very successful in winning these competitive grants over the years. In the staff report I've listed, we've been successful in each of the four cycles that have come through since the passing of the law, and for some fairly significant sums of money. And frankly, it's kind of hard to, I didn't produce any comparing statistics, but in each given cycle, usually about half of the state, from a county perspective, meaning half of the counties and all the cities in them get no money. So for us to have been successful in every single cycle is a testament to the staff's efforts to write a good advocate and our needs in this area to develop pedestrian biking facilities as compared to other places in the state. Cycle five is coming out soon. It has not begun yet. They go through a call-for-projects process in which they come out to the public and tell you, okay, you have three months to prepare an application, send us your project. And a component of that, the rules are always changing for ATP as well. Public participation is an important part of our criteria for whether we're successful on a project or not, and they are changing the metrics by which they measure public participation in the coming cycle. And so my staff came to me and said, we, we need to be in front of this issue and get the word out that we need feedback from the public about non-motorized or ATP-related needs within the city that they foresaw so that we can help to build the case for the project that we end up nominating. And so that's my whole purpose, and I, we've been out to Facebook, and I know that on the city website as well, just letting the public know that we want feedback. And it can be anything you're interested in in the issue, although if I would ask you to please, I'm looking for information related to non-motorized transportation within the city limits. Although, if you have needs that maybe involve the city, I do meet from time to time with the County of Kern and talk to them. I certainly have ideas for, for facilities that could be created that might link the city of Tatchapi to our surrounding community, so I'll be happy to take those and engage in those conversations with the County of Kern. But we've created an email address that's listed there on the staff report, projects@tatchpacytihall.com, and we would love your feedback on, on areas in town where you either have a project in mind, hey, we need a bike path here, or a piece of sidewalk here, and it's important because a bunch of people use it, or a lot of times, too, if you just are uncomfortable with an area from a biking and pedestrian area, let us know that, hey, you drive through that area. I know one that we get feedback on is Dennison Road in front of the high school. There's some discomfort there from some of the parents that have let us know, and I have a child going there, so I get it, that, you know, let us know that you see that, and if you have any specific thoughts for ways it could be improved, then please just pass those on. We will be coming back to you all after we've collected a lot of this data and the cycle rules are released, and let you know what we're thinking, ways in which we can take the feedback that we got and turn them into a project and ask you guys for further input. So that's my report tonight. We're looking for feedback. Thank you, guys, and I'm happy to ask questions about this program or anything else.
Any questions in the audience regarding this? Counsel? Oh, I'm sorry.
My name is Jim Roberts. I live in the city. He was talking about biking and walking, and I've brought this up before, of these funds possibly being available to repair current sidewalks that are spalling and cracking and nonexistent. That's part of walking and biking, and it is an ADA hazard. Nobody can get down some of these areas in a wheelchair.
Yeah, it's not, it's not specifically designed for that purpose, but not impossible either. So much of grant writing is about identifying if, for instance, the sidewalks have no handicap ramps at all, like for, say, for instance, in front of the Salvation Army. There's no place, then, we put an application under this program a couple of years ago. We were not successful to try to put in handicap ramps and then improve the spalling and destroyed sidewalk in that area for the benefit of handicap access to that particular business. So that, that would have been a qualified expense. So tell us where the area is, and let me do what I can with it, would be my answer to you.
Okay, well, there are obvious, if you walk around town, I did that, so, like, East Street, East Street is on the west side of East Street. Well, there are obvious, then, some of the concrete is, other levels of concrete.
There is?
Soon it's dangerous.
Okay.
Thank you.
What about one area from Cash Track to the junior high school for the high school?
Yeah.
Once you get back to the railroad track from there to the high school to the junior high school?
Go right this way.
There is no sidewalk?
Other than the two remaining roads.
Will you state your name, please?
Carl Garrick.
Thank you.
Yeah, Carl, that's actually an area we've got our eye on specifically. I'd love it if you would email it to me, but I'll take your feedback now, yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counsel?
I have a couple of questions. What exactly, which streets are exactly boundaries for our city limits, number one?
Roughly, by line? Roughly, the skyline is the southern boundary, the western boundary I always say is McDonald's, so I think it's easier for people to remember. The eastern boundary fluctuates quite a bit. Near the high school, it's just east of the neighborhood, across the street from the high school, but it also extends all the way out to Loves and Pilot. And then on the north end, it goes to the base of the mountains, it's past the hospital to the base of the mountains up there is the northern boundary, so that's kind of the rough thing, yeah.
And I have another question, please. Will this involve the north sides of streets? I've noticed that we've got a lot of sidewalks that have come up, like on Valley, they did all this reconstruction on Valley by the apartments, and then they don't touch the north side at all from like Mill Street down to Oakwood, and the kids walk down that way, but they stay on the south side. So, yeah, I've seen a lot of the sidewalks, the new sidewalks down there by Loves and Pilot, it's on the, well, it's I think partly on the north side, yeah, it needs to go all the way down on both sides, I think, but.
Well, I don't have a north-south bias, just so you know. We pick the side based on whatever the achievable goal, there are limits. ATP, for instance, they will grade you down if you're building facilities adjacent to developable land. That's a criteria, for instance, where they'll say, well, you should make the development of that land pay for that facility. So it can be tricky in those places, but anyway, that's why it's best if I just, tell me where everyone's concerns are and let me kind of fold that into a story in response, but if you've got a specific spot, for instance, on Oakwood, where you're seeing kids in particular or a lot of pedestrians, folks with a disability, elderly folks, those aren't necessarily a target of the program, but quite frankly, they tell a better story.
Yeah, I'm also on a Valley.
Take a picture, if you can. I am confident that the $2 million railroad project we received, which will be a huge enhancement to the downtown, and hopefully will start construction within a couple of months here, was solely based on the cover shoot photo, which was two mothers carrying a stroller across the railroad tracks with a toddler in tow, across the middle of the railroad tracks. And if you're a reviewer and you see that, the need is conveyed in a picture a thousand times better than anything that I could have written. So if you see stuff like that, be careful though, taking photos of students just randomly and just to give you guys a warning.
Oh, no, there's none on that side at all.
Police Chief Crager, I'm sure, would tell you not to do that.
Well, I don't have to worry, the north side never has them, it's the south side.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just a comment, I wish we could do it for pavement, yeah, streets are expensive to repair, but these kind of grants are for sidewalks and bike paths, and people hound us because they don't ride bikes and they don't use them. But an example is on like Cherry Lane, the new facility, the new sidewalk from Curbs and Gutter, you see a lot of people using that now, where in the past, they're walking in the street, and now it's a good way to get to and from. And then on Curry, and then on Valley, where people were walking in dirt or on the street, so it gets them out of harm's way. I wish we could, like I said, do everywhere in town where we need streets repaired, but this has to be used for that. So we'll take all the money we can get and add to it when we can.
All right.
Thank you. All right, city managers report?
Thank you, Mayor Wiggins. In case you did not know, this Thursday of the ninth is National Law Enforcement Day. Chief Crager is in the back, so I'd like to say thank you in advance for everything that Chief and his staff do to keep us safe 24/7. So if you see a policeman on the streets, tell him thank you, give him a wave, you know, but this Thursday is National Law Enforcement Day, so thank you, Chief. Also, a couple things related to the epic snowstorm. I don't think we've had this much snow since I was a kid, growing up on Bartha Street. It sowed and sowed and sowed, there were some 30 inches plus in some areas. And Carl's right, trees, hundreds if not thousands of trees were damaged, damaging private property, damaging public property, so on and so forth. So Don and I and Chief and his crew, we worked tirelessly, 24/7 actually, for several days, removing trees, plowing snow. We hired, under an emergency contract, we hired an arborist with a team of eight individuals that cut limbs and chipped limbs, and there is still a lot to do. So the task at hand was to get the streets clear and safe. Now we've got probably two weeks' worth of work left, and we will continue marching through the city on public property, not private property. We don't want to venture onto people's private property, quite honestly, I want to make that very, very clear, but public property, we're doing that. So plowing and tree removal was a big, big job. We spent a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of money. We're welcoming the snow, but that was a big effort. Thank you to the Public Works Department, the Police Department, California High Patrol, Caltrans, Kern County Sheriff, the County of Kern, lots of people pulling in the same direction on the same road, so heavy, heavy snowstorm. Also want to make sure that you, I put these in your box, two letters from Kern Cog, the City of Tatchby was fortunate enough to receive two awards through Kern Cog this year. The first one was a Regional Award of Merit in the category of transportation, so that's for the Downtown Park and Ride and Transit Center led by Jay's crew with Andrew. So that was, that was an award-winning project at the County of Kern. And the second one, for the second year in a row, was Key Budgets Department, and that is for journalism, specifically for the city's educational videos regarding public safety power shut-ups, or PSBS. We're very active in getting the information out and what's happening, what we're doing about it, how we're working with others to make sure that we're managing this. And by the way, PSBS is not over. It's cold and the wind's not blowing, but spring, summer, we have to make sure that we continue to work with Southern California Edison, our partners with the County of Kern and others to make sure we minimize this impact. But these two awards are a reflection of the staff that you have here and the hard work, and we're very excited to be able to receive those here in the coming months. And then last but not least, I'm looking forward to a very, very positive and productive 2020. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel member reports, Mr. Davis?
Well, like Mr. Garrett said, you know, I'm really proud of, you know, how we, the city and county handled the snow, and I'm also proud of all the citizens. I know we had a lot of people in my church and a lot of people in my organizations, I'm involved with the scouts, they're out there plowing people's driveways or shoveling people's driveways. It was a great effort by everybody, most I've ever seen since I've been here for 40 years. It was a big undertaking by everybody, just in my neighborhood. Appreciate everybody in our neighborhood getting together and getting, making sure everybody got all their driveways saved. That's about all I have to do there.
Okay, Mr. Smith?
On the tree pickup, are tree limbs that are still in the parkway, are we going to pick those up?
Yes, so, yeah, we're making piles, and if anybody has tree limbs, and if you put them in the street, we will remove them.
Do they have to be in the street or can they be in the parkway?
Well, we like, put them in a safe spot, call City Hall and ask us, we'd like, we want to work with you.
Are we going to chip them or just take them to the dump?
Well, we're chipping some onsite, but we're also moving the limbs to Public Works where they'll be chipped all at once.
Okay.
This is a big job, and we're taking each kind of project, piece by piece.
But I just, I just want the citizens to know that that service is available.
Yes.
You know, if you've got tree limbs that are down, put them in the parkway, and we'll get to you.
Soon as we can.
As we can.
We have spent tens of thousands of dollars over the last week, tens of thousands.
Good, that's a good thing. All right. I think that's enough on that, but I just want to make sure we get it done. Thanks.
Again, we haven't had a snowstorm like this since I was here in my twenties, and that was the seventies, and we thank you for all your efforts, and that was my main comment from people that I saw about snow removal, they think it should be right in front of their house and so on and so forth. But how many, just out of curiosity, how many snowplows do we have, and they're responsible for a big area?
Four.
Yeah.
And so they all went.
And we plowed 24/7 for a couple of days, in some cases you might not be able to tell, remember it was just snowing and so on and so forth. But main, main goal was to keep the main roads open. We have a, you know, a policy, a procedure, that's Boulevard, Curry, Valley, you know, those roads, and then working with CHP and Caltrans, we had three days of just chaos with travelers trying to accommodate everybody and get people to where they needed to go safely. We plowed, plowed, plowed.
Yeah, my husband was an deputy sheriff, and they would cringe on snow days like that, you know, they would just, oh, oh, Mountain Park, everybody was disrespectful, ballpark, anyway they wanted, go down the hills, take down fences and so on and so forth, so.
They still do.
Well, I think they blocked it, they blocked it.
Yeah, but you still have people come up, you know.
So we appreciate the efforts. I know everybody wasn't pleased with their driveways not plowed, but I got to the point where I just did my own, and I thought, forget that, I'll just do my own.
So I couldn't be prouder of our public works and police.
Right.
These guys were, guys and gals were tired, so.
Yeah, I know, we were up at three, so.
How many miles of streets and roads do we have, ballpark?
There's about 165 miles of lane miles of streets.
Then you wouldn't think that, that's a lot.
Yeah.
So each street, so 80 streets?
Yeah.
So lane miles would be one way, but still, you got to get it plowed with, how many plows?
Four.
Four plows, and Curves kept them going, so.
That's great, thank you.
I just want to say that I haven't been writing my column like I should be, but I'm getting back into that now, the new year, and so I was thinking about, you know, snow in a column. I talked to a lot of old timers. I have lived here almost 19 years, but I'm not an old timer. Every one of them gave me a different scenario and date, or which was the worst snowstorm then compared to now. So I grew up in Mojave, I can tell you about two, you know, it's easy, but everybody, I just got tickled about that. And I did get complaints about, you know, why they weren't plowing side streets, and I told them to come look at my street, it wasn't plowed either, so, you know, get over it. But anyways, we all survived, and I haven't heard of any broken bones and anything, so that's wonderful. Warrior Park has become a winter wonderland park for sledding, but anyway, it was, it was a good time and a good thing, and I didn't hear too many people really fuss about it, so. With that in mind, we're going to adjourn, we have no closed session tonight, thank you very much for coming.